Where do I open my folder?
Well, we we're gonna ask the clerk where she'd like to go if she has a preference. If she doesn't, then I'll pick. We're back for our work session on budget items. Commissioner North is still at the shooting complex presentation, hopes to be joining us in a bit. It was, looked like it was about to finish up, but who knows? Commissioner Freel had an appointment that he couldn't get out of. He may or may not be joining us in a bit. Madam Clerk, where would you like to go next?
Sorry, could we go to Roden Bridge if we were done with the sheriff?
Yes, we are done with the sheriff's department, although for clarification, it seemed like maybe Commissioner Laird, Commissioner Milne, on this 3% COLA that was requested to be added for an additional $440,000, that included a .9% increase. So his 3% was, included the .9%. And, and what, where we landed was that we're looking at funding the .9%, not calling it a COLA adjustment, and we're gonna have some more conversation on that in the days to come. You and I, or you and the commission, as I understand, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, was my, I thought it was the retirement contribution and the 3% COLA were two separate items.
No, his, his narrative, and I think the way he's explained it before, is in order to tell us how he came up with 3%, he said, "Part of it is the statutory change, which is the .9%, and the rest is kind of what they're seeing as a inflationary number." Madam Clerk, is that how you, I think that's how you understand it as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, but, but the .9% would go strictly into the pension contribution and wouldn't be part of their salary.
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna look at, at that so that the net impact, so that the people receiving that, that pension don't see an additional deduction of .9% on their paycheck. There, there are a couple ways of skinning the cat that the clerk is looking into and is gonna get back with us on. But yeah, that .9% would be included somewhere. Is that fair to say?
Mr. Chairman, yes, that's correct.
All right, so then if we can go to Roden Bridge, thanks for the, gentlemen, thanks for the follow-up question to clarify that. So then on Roden Bridge, once again, we talked about equipment requests in our previous session. The equipment request ended up at $2,030,000. So we don't need to talk about that. What we need to focus in on are the different areas of the Roden Bridge Department, the first of which is the administration side of it.
Since we're talking Roden Bridge, real quick, Mr. Chairman, Mike Hegler asked that I bring it up one more time, the potential of adding the paving for the west side of Circle Drive at Bear Trap for 130. I don't know if this is something we wanna look at at this time, go through this and then discuss it, or what?
Well, I, I wasn't gonna be, I don't think this is administration. This would be a capital outlay, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, if that's your preference, Commissioner, we can talk about that off the bat. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts, it'd be nice, but is it required? And with the cuts that we're doing with everybody, we're not gonna get the pavement again for that price for up there with everything, all the work being done up there. However, with the cuts of this year, we can more than likely use, do a packed gravel. Mr. Hegler's concern is the shock. That pad, that new asphalt will have a, oh, four-plus inch height rise, which with vehicles driving on and off, it can tear up the road where they're driving on and off. Also for markings and stuff like that for Bear Trap, but mainly for the road structure. If we're able to put in a, you know, some road base and pack it and everything like that, so that there isn't the, the four-inch plus, six-inch plus, whatever it is, height rise, I think we'd be fine with that at a later time personally, but I told him I'd bring it up since he asked for.
Yeah, again, this is, just, just for context for everybody, there's currently a Circle Drive re, road reconstruction and paving project occurring. And the thought was, in addition to the budget request of Mr. Hegler for Roden Bridge, there would be this $130,000 to do some paving for that area. It'd be basically on the west side of the road at Bear Trap Parking Lot, the primary area to park. And, and Commissioner Laird, do you wanna speak to that next, or do you want me to? Okay. Well, I, I don't think we have the money. I think that there, you know, any, anytime vehicles are traveling on the edge or near the edge of asphalt, there's gonna be wear and erosion and alligatoring and deterioration and required repairs or reconstruction. I think this area is no different, and certainly it might be, you know, more likely with the amount of traffic that there's gonna be some, some damage to the edge of this. But I, I do think that we should pass on this for now. And like you said, Commissioner Milne, hopefully just focus on a transition, a packed, well-packed, compacted transition between the new asphalt and the, the gravel parking lot. And we can address this next fiscal year, and depending upon where we end up with this current budget, you know, maybe we can come back to that if we have, you know, narrowed the shortfall, the gap to the commission's, you know, satisfaction. It's not that much money, but every dollar, I think, counts, so my feeling is, right now, we, we leave that out.
So it just reminds me to remind you of something. We should bring Coats Road into a very serious conversation at some point, because it isn't set up to handle any kind of equipment runs that's being proposed, speed limits, all of that kind of thing, but this is something we should discuss, Mr. Chairman, at some point.
Commissioner Laird, thank you. I'm also quite concerned about Coats Road. I think that it's a great road for the type of traffic that it currently handles. I think that's what it was designed for, and I think that if, if there were gonna be any sort of industrial operation with lots of haul trucks, it would deteriorate the surface of that road from the top down to the, to the intersection of CY Highway 220. So I, I don't think that from a budgetary perspective, we need to add that at this point. But depending upon what happens, there's, there's gonna be severe impact to that road.
I think we should consider setting weight limits on that road and speed limits also, just as a future thought.
On the speed limits.
Everybody's far is nice to be ahead of.
Yeah, I, I think we can certainly have some discussion on what we might wanna do to protect that road, because it is a good road that we and the city and the people living up there just recently spent some of their hard-earned dollars on.
They did. The other thing that I had a legal question for, the county attorney, I kinda mentioned it to her, but I don't think anybody wrote it down, and that is, in a mining operation, you can't have a mining operation within 300 feet of somebody's house. So the question is, is if they're hauling gravel down Coats Road, say, for instance, then coming within 25 feet of a house, is the hauling of the product also part of a mining operation? It would seem to me that it is, which would then mean that they couldn't come down that road anyway, because they'd be, there are houses there that are much closer to that roadway than 300 feet. So just another thought for the commissioners.
Well, let's, thank you, Commissioner Laird. I know that's Roden Bridge related, but let's, let's get to the budget, knowing that we're gonna need to talk about that in the, in the not-too-distant future, for sure. Madam Clerk, I was gonna ask where we stand. Well, I guess I'll just make a note online. This is under administration, 71210851 machinery equipment rental. We had budgeted 112,000. We expended, as of May 3rd, 28, and Mr. Hegler brought that down to 20. So hopefully, we won't have a lot of machinery equipment rental, and I think that's what he's envisioning.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I spoke to Mr. Hegler about that, and he felt that the 20 was an appropriate amount.
Where did we end up on utility services for the year 7801?
37,737.
Okay. And on buildings, 8012?
12,817.
And painting supplies, 8418?
16,932.
That one seems like it's a pretty consistent $30,000 allocated amount, and we haven't had to get into that to, I think the 16,000 is as high as I've seen in the last few years. I wonder about whether we need the full 30 on that. Commissioner Milne or Commissioner Laird?
Who's on utility services? Has the numbers there, and then the budget request is $3,100?
No, no. Utility services line 7801, the budget request that I see is 5,000, uh, 53,100.
Yeah, I keep, my eyes keep shifting off that.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. I can't see very well. That's, that's funny. You, okay, that's two out of the three of us. Don't, I don't have my glasses.
One day, all five of us were, had our glasses on, and we're looking, looking down at this stuff and can't see it.
Unfortunately, Commissioner Milne and the clerk are, are well-prepared in the corrective lens department. Or apparently, at least they're being quiet about it.
Have to be at the right distance, then I can see the 53.
Madam Clerk, line 8508, tires and tire repair maintenance. Where did we end up on that?
36,891.
And finally, line 8422?
253,668.
Okay.
Can you repeat that, please?
253,668.
And for the tires, that was 8508 or 8509?
8508. Oh, well, excuse me, we have tire repair and maintenance, which is 8508. And then we have, which is 36,891 has been expended. And then we have 8509, which is tires, batteries, and accessories, which 3,930 has been expended.
Madam Clerk, turning to the next budget sheet, 0854, vehicle service. Operating supplies, 8431, no, that's not the one. Motor fuels, where did we end up on 8501?
439,135.
Okay. Commissioners, did you have other questions on, along those lines of where we ended up for the current fiscal year?
Oh, just, one more, sir. 8507?
65,636.
So I, I think that, you know, we were over in machinery equipment parts. I think we pointed out some areas where Mr. Hegler's budget was under the previous year's request, so that's good. This is one of those hard areas where it's completely, you know, we're, we're subject to the whims of Mother Nature. We are, we were lucky last winter as compared to the previous. We have, if we have a flood, we saw some, some damages that were unanticipated, emergency-type things. So we have to be careful with, you know, just looking at the comparison to the current fiscal year and thinking, well, you know, and I know we do this with all of them, but I think especially with Roden Bridge, we have to be cautious. I, I do see a little room here and there. Commissioners, what's your pleasure in terms of reducing some of, one or more of the amounts that we, we discussed?
What, what kind of a reduction are you thinking, Mr. Chairman?
Well, you know, Commissioner Laird, I think, you know, I can, I can probably see 50,000 total, but I probably can't see much more than that. And that is in part due to, or looking at some from motor fuels. You know, maybe, maybe 15,000 or 20,000 from motor fuels of the 700,000 requested. And, you know, maybe a little bit more on painting supplies, you know, maybe 5,000, 10,000 on painting supplies, those, those kinds of, of numbers.
So let's go line by line, then.
Sure.
7801, utility service. Looking at it, we've never really cracked 50, so I'd, I'd, I'd probably drop it down to 50.
So just taking off how much?
3,100. And then buildings, maintenance, cleaning. I'd leave that status. We've had it where it's gone above the, above 20,000 before in the past. Depending on, you know, weather and whatever, that could potentially go up, depending on what we get. It just seems like it'd be a, it's a decent little threshold right there is 20, personally.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
And I think the reason why it was more in 23, 24 was some projects that I think was facilitated through the department, or some repairs that happened out there as well.
Yeah. Painting supplies, I'd probably put that about 15. I know it went over that this year, but historically, it looks like it hasn't. Machinery equipment parts, I'd leave it alone. Parts are bloody expensive anymore. And then the, if you wanted to get down into tires and whatnot, maybe you could probably drop that 8508 down to 45,000. And then the other one. It looks, I'd leave that one alone. It looks like it's been higher in the past years.
You're talking about motor fuels, or? Are you talking about county vehicle servicing?
So 8508, that's tire repair and maintenance, 45,000.
Okay, you were talking about 8509, 8508 and 8509?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 8509, I'd leave it alone.
Okay.
At what he has. So for that page, that would be my recommendations.
Sounds reasonable to me.
What do you think about 8501 motor fuels on the next page?
Which one is that?
8501 motor fuels.
I saw that. You know, I often wonder, though, you know, you don't know what that diesel fuel's gonna be from week to week, almost.
Right, we've never went beyond that, though. You know, we could go 550,000, I think we'd be okay.
Drop it 150, you're talking about?
Or we could go 600,000, I'd drop it 100,000. I think we'd be okay, it looks like.
Well, if we run out of gas money, we'll find some, I guess, won't we?
Milk money and gas money.
You'll, you'll write, you'll write that check.
I've budgeted gas money before and milk money.
I have too.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'd put it at one of those two, 55, or 550 or 600,000. Fuel hasn't got cheaper, but it hasn't gotten, hasn't exploded like, you don't know what the next election's gonna do to it.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable taking 100,000 off of motor fuels. I think 150 might be a little steep.
Yeah.
I think the other items, you mentioned 11,000 from tire repairs is, is, is fine. 15,000 from painting is fine. Utility services, that's another unknown. So taking 3,100 off, as you proposed, is, is fine with me. I, you know, we'll, we'll see, we'll see, and but, but I'd be, I'd be okay with all that.
Yeah, I would too.
Did you catch all that?
I did.
All right, good. So we need to do treasure.
Mr. Chairman, can we, unless you wanna address this all at once, but can we? Well, I guess we can address it when we look at one cent reserve. We'll just do that later, never mind.
Okay. Yeah, we're, I was gonna do treasure now, and then I think we're down to one cent?
Yeah.
And the other stuff that
Okay.
that we're, that's on the back burner, the front burner, and the back of our minds.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll turn to treasure page.
Madam Clerk, sometime next, maybe next year, we could get a little bigger print.
Oh, quit.
Maybe you can get new glasses.
I did get them. I bumped it up 50%.
I'll get you a magnifying.
I can get 300s if I have to.
I'll get you a magnifying glass.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
I know, it is getting smaller as we get older.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If I could get three, if you pull up three, just out of curiosity, that would be 7031. We haven't, did we spend anything this year?
Mr. Chairman, no.
What would he need that for?
7101?
We have expended 1,0365.
And then the final one that I'm curious about would be 8632.
2,250.
What about 8411?
11,241.
Do you, do you know why he's asking for money in that 7031 contract labor line?
Mr. Chairman, I do not. It looks like it might just be a placeholder, if you will.
And then the repair and maintenance contracts. I don't see that it's ever exceeded $5,000.
Let me, I'll run that one real quickly. Well, it's not real quick, but I'll run it here in a second. Mr. Chairman, so that has been used previously to pay for the tax file, which is the system that we are now going to own.
Yeah, the Eileen talked to us about that. Thanks for reminding us, and that was, yeah, so that, I think, should go away, or at least
Drop significantly.
I think we
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if Eileen, I think she put it in her budget request.
I think so. To purchase.
Yes, we are, yes.
So my, my thinking was reduce the contract labor in half, so I don't see that it's been used, so take it from 5,000 to 2,500.
Has, has, has that much ever even never been spent? Why don't you just reduce it down to 1,000, then?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, let's see. Contract labor has not been expended for the last three years.
Yeah, we haven't put anything in there.
So what's the pleasure of the commission? Is it zero or 1,000?
I'd zero it out again this year.
Just eliminate it?
Well, we won't eliminate the line item, but eliminate the
Request.
Request. On maintenance, repair, maintenance, and contracts, I think we can reduce that by $15,000 to leave it at 5,000, just in case.
Yeah.
We're on treasurer. Commissioner Laird, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yes.
Travel expenses. Travel expenses, that's at twenty-six hundred. I think we can take a thousand off of that, looking at prior years, which haven't exceeded, so that'd leave that at sixteen hundred.
I'd leave office supplies where it's at.
I was gonna propose to reduce that by five thousand. Maybe five thousand's too much. What about twenty-five hundred?
That'd work.
Commissioner Laird?
Okay, by me.
So that leaves that at fifteen thousand instead of seventeen-five. Motor vehicle temporary forms, I think that the treasures, I recall, stated in prior years, it hadn't been, what did he say? That was some old forms. It was something that, that was maybe utilized once upon a time and, and really hasn't been in the last few years, but I do see that in the last month or so, there was an expenditure. Madam Clerk, can you give us a little more information on, um, the additional amount that was apparently expended over the last thirty days?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, two thousand two hundred and fifty has been expended.
What is that? What do they do with that? Do they?
Yeah, I was wondering that as well.
I'll run that real quick. I believe it's state forms. They're temporary tags that they, that we have to buy now, that the state doesn't provide.
Oh, really?
But let me, yeah.
You sound surprised, Commissioner Millen.
No, I guess not.
But I'll run that real quick.
They're taxing the county then? Is that what it boils down to?
Shifting, shifting the burden.
Financial burden.
Taxing the county, that's right. That's what I said.
Indirect.
My thinking is we could reduce that. We could take two thousand off of that. We'd leave it at twenty-seven hundred, which is still more than spent in the last three years.
Well, it's just on the credit card, so I'm not sure. I don't have a, the actual vendor, which I could, I could look into it further if you'd like.
Toying and all of that, is that what that'd be?
No, this is motor vehicle temporary forms, so temp tags, I'm assuming. I could dig deeper into who, what we're, who we're paying, if you'd like.
I don't think so. I think I'm good.
So I'll go by and ask you.
So I have twenty-one, twenty-five five. Reduction.
What was that, Mr. Chairman?
I have a total of what we've talked about at twenty-five thousand five hundred.
Could, could you please tell me what you would like the eighty-six thirty-two to be reduced to?
I would take two thousand off of that, leaving it at two thousand seven hundred.
Thank you.
You want me to go over the, the ones above that? Have you got that?
I got those.
Okay. So that, I believe, Madam Clerk, we've dealt with all the departments?
Yes.
Then we would shift to one cent?
Yes, I do have a note on another expenditure if you would be so inclined.
Uh, yeah, for which department, which line?
Well, it's the, um, the demo over here at B Street.
I'm sorry?
The demolition over at B Street.
Uh huh.
So we probably need to add that expense to the budget somewhere unless it's coming out of reserve.
Yeah, especially now it's two-thirds done, it looks like.
I talked to Mr. Peterson, um, more than a week ago, and I told him that we needed a bill ASAP and he was gonna get together with Heather. And I assume you haven't seen any bill from recycled materials?
I haven't. That doesn't mean, I mean, they don't come directly to me, but going, did he build the whole thing?
I, I don't know what he was gonna do. I said, build for what you can.
What is the name of the?
What's that?
What's the name of the vendor again?
Recycled materials.
What's the whole thing about? Thirty-seven thousand? Tear it down.
Would it be a DBA?
No.
Okay. I don't show an expenditure for this project.
Okay. Well, I think you're right then. I think we should add that and just my recollection is that it's right about thirty-seven thousand, thirty-six five hundred. Commissioners, is that your recollection? If you'd like, Tracy, I can send legal text to get the actual number or we can go with that for now.
That, that's fine.
Okay, let's, let's go with thirty-seven thousand for now.
Is there a particular account line you'd like me to add it to? I could add it to professional services in the Commissioner's general accounts.
What do you do for capital improvements?
I could... We have land, we have a land and building in thirty-nine.
That's what I think we should do, cause then that'll go to basis.
Yeah, so that's eight zero zero five zero zero five thirty-nine. So it's, I will add that thirty-seven thousand then?
Uh, thirty-seven.
Which line did you put in?
Uh, in thirty-nine, with, and eight zero zero five zero zero five three nine.
All right, so looking at one cent. Madam Clerk, would you mind taking the lead on this? Maybe you have updates. I, I don't know.
So just going down the list, these numbers reflected on your worksheets are what was approved for the four-year schedule span for one cent seventeen. Is there any that you have questions about or in conversations that you know that need to be adjusted? I'm, I think Roden Bridge, I think we addressed Roden Bridge.
Yeah.
I feel like he had a duplicate, some duplicate request in his budget requests that were going to be covered in this fiscal twenty-five payout.
Right, specifically the two trucks and the loader. Um, he had the trucks in the approved one cent already and in lieu of the motor grater, one of the motor graders, to do the, the loader, and so I think we're good there.
Detention center.
What's that?
Detention center for boilers.
So for the maintenance, that what we need to bring over for maintenance is for the maintenance, ma- maintenance department, excuse me, is the courthouse chiller for a hundred and eighty-six thousand six fifty-five. Well, that, that'll go into the one cent reserve request. And then the parking lot for the elected officials, a hundred and two thousand.
How much were the chillers?
Hundred and eighty-six thousand six fifty-five. I believe that includes setting them as well. Now, will there be an, an expense for paving the B Street property this fiscal?
I think the recommendation of Mr. Hagler, I know the recommendation of Mr. Hagler was to not pave it the first year.
Okay.
There, there may be a need to put some material down, some base. But because of potential settlement due to the, uh, there's a basement and Mr. Peterson is filling it. But we don't want to put a nice paving, uh, a parking lot there and then have a sinkhole or something like that. So what about adding ten thousand dollars for gravel and dressing up the one thirty-six West B Street property so that it can become usable for the employees? I have no idea if that amount is, is reasonable. Mr. Hagler may laugh at that, or he may think that's enough to get started and he can always come back to us, I think, if, if it's gonna be significantly more.
Well, the pavement itself, if you paved it correctly.
Well, we're not gonna
I know that, but it's about a hundred thousand. So if you, if you do what you're doing, the ten thousand, it'd be fine. What I would like to see though, is that our employees could still park there, even though this, through the first year, cause they'll help settle the ground and all that driving across it.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping is that, and expecting is that it can be utilized this coming fiscal year.
I can tell you who really wants to use it.
Who's that?
The judges for the juries. I said, well, it's an employee parking lot. I don't know.
Um, so is that okay, Commissioners? Just add ten thousand dollars. Tracy, let's, let's do that.
Now, Mr. Chairman, would you like that added to the one cent reserve?
I think that ought to go on the same item as the land and buildings for Mr. Peterson that, cause it's all part of the, the project.
Oh, so add it another ten to the thirty-seven?
Right. MRG is resolved. Salt Creek Water Line, eight hundred and fifty thousand. We need to add that somewhere, don't we?
Yeah, so I have it in reserve projects. So can we back up?
Sure.
Just
Have they drawn any of that money yet? No.
Sorry, I have to flip through a couple different things here. Typically, we don't, well, I shouldn't say typically. We're not known to carry over one cent, of course, unless the projects just can't get done. So the fire protection dis- the fire protection district, um, they were allocated six hundred and fifty thousand and they only expended two hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Where does that money go back to?
Well, it'll now go into the one cent reserve. So is that something you want to carry forward to the reserve?
I wouldn't mind seeing it go, I wouldn't mind seeing it go to, back to the reserve, just cause we've hit that reserve several times for other projects. It'd be nice to still have that in the future, that option.
I agree. I think if we have additional requests from our, our fire district folks, then we can address that at the time, but automatically carry it over. I, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any others like that? I, I like moving in this direction.
Yes, Roden Bridge, I think we talked about, but I'd like to discuss it some more, please. I can certainly print, I, I can print this out. Um, so there's a haul truck that was carried forward from twenty-three. I think it's ordered or something. It's a hundred and seventy thousand. A utility box that was approved for one cent reserve this current fiscal. And these are in his budget request too. Neighborhood road fund, the twenty-five thousand for the ISDs. The Hurst gravel pit for one point two million fifty, one million two hundred and fifty thousand. Which was in his request. And then I have Buffalo Creek gravel pit for seventy thousand in his narrative, and then there's another two hundred thou- or two million in the thirty-nine request, so I don't know what the difference is there. He has Buffalo Creek gravel pit construction for two million, and then in one cent reserve, he has Buffalo Creek gravel pit. Oh, must be engineering, so that two million dollars is reflected in the thirty-nine account request. Does it need to be all put together?
Are you asking if we add the Buffalo Creek gravel pit engineering of seventy thousand to the two million?
Or the two million to the seventy thousand and one cent reserve? Should it all be lumped together, I guess, is my first question, and if so, where? It just seems like it, it's kind of scattered.
Yeah, I just, I guess if it's, I guess it, I can see why maybe it's separate if the, um, the line item is for equipment and then the line item is for equipment for two million and we're trying to make gravel so that we can put it on the road. So I guess I see why that's separated from the professional services. My thought is we leave, leave that one, leave that one alone on Buffalo Creek. I, I guess unless somebody else has.
Which one on Buffalo Creek?
Well, both of them. The two million for the, uh, basically the material crushing. Seventy thousand for the engineering, which I'm not sure of the status on that.
You need an engineer to run a crusher?
No, I'd say keep them separate, yes, but.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like to date expended for the engineering services is sixteen thousand one forty-two, and we had originally allocated eighty. So that would bring that down to perhaps sixty-three, sixty-three thousand eight fifty-eight. But Mr. Hagler had put the seventy in, so I'm not sure if there's other items that I'm not considering.
I, I think, I think we'd leave it alone. Um, hopefully it won't be expended. I, I know the math, but I'm thinking it's not enough money to, to, to worry about or to reduce.
Okay, and then this current fiscal, we had allocated fifty thousand for selenium mitigation for conservation district. Do you want to keep that in the reserve projects? In one cent reserve?
Well, who's, who's doing that? Who's reducing selenium out there for us?
The conservation district.
So.
They had received that in one cent sixteen. And then either didn't get the request in for seventeen or we didn't fund it. So we ended up funding it out of reserve projects last, for this current fiscal. So I'm curious as if we were going to continue that.
Commissioners, what?
I'd say yes. Did they request it again, or?
I believe it is in our narrative.
I thought so. I thought we said, yeah, do it. It's back in the commissioners, right?
Correct, yes.
Is, is there, what's the line item on that? I'm not finding it.
It's under your thirty-three. And it is, maybe it's progress. It's ninety-one thirty-nine, zero, zero, five, three, three. And there is a narrative. It is right behind the new crisis center narrative.
Far back. Yeah, when, when we went to, uh, these tabs earlier, we'd said thumbs up.
They requested forty in their general fund. I don't see it specifically spelled out, but in the first bullet point, it talks about upgrades to irrigation systems to minimize the spread of selenium through the watershed.
It's been a highly successful, uh, program. It's reduced selenium into the river. Better than pretty much any program within the nation that's similar to it. They, these guys have done a lot of.
Yeah, I think we should keep it. I, I think is it just whether we put it into a one cent on the one cent page? Or whether we keep it over here on the commissioners thirty-three?
Well, two separate. One is forty thousand under the commissioners. And this fifty thousand for selenium mitigation is under one cent reserve, so two different amounts.
Okay. Well, I don't think we need both. And the request, the narrative request doesn't ask for both. It asks for forty, right?
Real.
Correct.
So, um, I think, I think we give the one cent a break unless you guys want to keep it at the one cent, but we already kind of included it over on the commissioner's side. Now, clerk, what do you think about that? Do you think our numbers?
Whatever. It's the pleasure of the commissioners.
I put it there.
Where?
With the commissioner's side. We don't have any supporting of why they missed. If they missed, maybe they didn't want even bother to or want to have one cent. So without that supporting background, I would keep one cent as is and then, and just keep the forty thousand in there on their side in the commissioners. It makes it cleaner to me.
Are you saying take the one cent reserve to zero? Or keeping both doc figures in?
Just, just the forty.
You're leaving the forty in on commissioners.
Right.
And zeroing out the one cent on that item.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Whatever I meant.
Okay. So total funding would be forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can we move down? So to the health department?
Yep.
We, in fiscal, this current fiscal, we had two point two million. Obviously, we've expended, but what's the pleasure of the commission?
And, and you're not, are you talking about?
One cent reserve. I'm sorry, one cent reserve.
Yeah, I, I think our plan was, was it taking six point five or six million? Out of that to make up that seventeen million dollar gap?
I thought it was six-ish.
Yeah, I thi- I think we'll do six. And then the rest through the interest off the investments for period of estimated two to two and a half years. And I know we've worked with, and we are working with the treasurer's office to, show. It's not a restricted account, but it's kind of a separate bookkeeping entry.
And I thought about this this morning. I think it would behoove us to put an expense line in the budget for spending those interest funds, so we can definitely keep a really good track of where we're at.
Good. Can you do that?
I'll probably put it in the commissioners.
And what's, where they're going to.
Pardon me?
And where they're going to.
Yep.
Yeah. I like that.
Good.
So six million for that?
Yep.
Okay, and then moving down to the Midwest water line. I have it, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand right now.
I asked Commissioner North and he was pretty sure we were going to need to draw on that this coming fiscal year. So I think we need to include that as well.
The total amount? Okay. And then I have the lodge at two point eight. I show we've expended eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, one sixty-eight.
Was that primarily for architectural fees?
I'm going to say probably yes. Without running it, I don't know for certain.
I can't remember if we've received, I think we have received the seven hundred and fifty thousand from the school district.
Not sure.
I thought we did.
How much were they giving us?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Do you want me to reach out to Nick?
Yeah, sure.
And then that's all I have for the reserve.
One additional item off the top of my head is the airport control tower.
Those are going to come out of.
I thought of that.
Those, um.
Twenty million?
Kind of had it, it's gone. I know where it's coming, but I can't think right now where it's coming.
Okay, so just a quick recap, as I recall. The commission, uh, I want to say it was a year in August of twenty twenty-three. Glenn at the airport came to us and said they, um, are on the shortlist, which is not very short of, of a new, um, tower and federal funding for that requested. And we agreed to commit two million dollars. They got turned down the first time. Uh, I think, uh, there were too many, um, requests for the amount allocated or available from the federal government. So they're in the process of reapplying or have reapplied. Glenn does not think we would need our two million dollars for construction in this current fiscal year, or I'm sorry, in the coming fiscal year, and that it would be fall of twenty twenty-six. Or no, that's not right. It would be fiscal year twenty-six, fall twenty twenty-five, uh, when those funds, uh, would be needed. He did say, uh, that, um, there's some more engineering to do. And if we had room, uh, to modify, and I don't know if it's really a modification, but to spend a million dollars this fiscal year on engineering and design, and then a million for the construction, uh, in the next fiscal year, um, we could do it that way, too. It sounded like he had flexibility, um, and it really just kind of comes down to where our, our numbers are. Commissioners, do you have a preference on whether to defer the entire two million? Or plan a million this coming fiscal year and a million the next fiscal year?
Well, we've got a lot of money in that health building. We're gonna have money in this parking lot. We've got. I'd, I'd like to see it maybe in a different year. But when will they know whether they've been given the grant?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer. I, I think it's, it's not really on a rolling basis, but I think they do it once or twice a year, so maybe this fall.
Should we wait until we see whether they get the grant?
Well, we could, and, and one thing, um, to consider is that if we spend a million dollars on a design and it's not approved, we've still spent the million dollars on the design. If we wait till it's green, we, till there's a green light, then, then proceed with the two million dollars at that point.
That's what I'd rather do.
Mr. Chairman, didn't we talk about taking that tower out of ad verum?
I don't know off the top of my.
I have, I have a note. It's downstairs, because I just looked at that the other day, again.
If you'll let us know. We, we do need to deal with it, but I'm thinking perhaps that this commission, the four of us, are, are thinking we defer that two million dollars. Whether it's in ad verum or not. But, but if you'll look at your note, I think we're leaning toward deferring it, though, instead of the one million and one million.
And then also, did we talk about, did I miss the lodge? Did we talk about the lodge yet, the two point eight?
It was briefly mentioned.
I missed it.
You said you'd paid eight hundred thousand out. That was the issue.
Correct, thank you. I didn't know if we had talked any further.
No, we stopped there.
Okay, thanks.
What else you need?
I don't, well, on the lodge, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I think we were kind of hoping that would just go away.
Oh.
No, no.
It's getting built.
The, as I see the one cent, I see we've got a water line uh, from the well of the lodge to replace. I'm not sure if that was done. That was last fiscal year.
It wasn't done. It's in its narrative, I believe.
So that, that carries over. And then we did not have the lodge in one cent. We had just budgeted it from one cent reserve. Is that what the recollection is?
Can you stop for a second?
Sure.
Go back to the water line you're saying in, in one cent?
Yep.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Where?
I'm seeing it on one cent seventeen. Right after the spreadsheets.
Right, it's, it's right at the very top.
The first item under parks.
Sorry. Yeah, there was no, I didn't put it in.
Well, it's, it's in the one cent.
For this current fiscal, right?
Right.
So, yes, I did not put that in.
Yeah, so that, that does need to carry over.
Carry over. Eventually be paid.
Eventually the work gets done.
Yeah, that's real eventually.
Should be going in before, uh.
This guy's building is done.
They don't have to lift that load up. Or throw under it. There's also on his narrative for Parks Mountain, the one cent seventeen approved project. Twenty-three, twenty-four, so move to twenty-four, twenty-five.
So we have, we addressed the lodge itself, yeah?
You keep coming back to that. Let's get a clue. So we discussed in past of, uh, utilizing the, um, interests for that of the funds.
Yeah, but we can't for two years.
That's okay, thank you.
Because the health department building.
Health department, it's health department. I think the lodge started before the health department.
Tracy, I think for now we have to take it out of one cent reserve.
Yeah.
An, an amount, please?
Two million.
Okay, Michael has two point three in his narrative.
He said we've expended eight hundred, eight fifty. We don't know if his number in the narrative, which he probably submitted in late April, has the full expenditures
Okay.
from that moment in April till present. So there's probably some overlap. There might not be full overlap.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So I think for now we just do two million.
Okay.
And we cross that bridge when we get to it. we cross that bridge when we get to it. The are are we done with one cent?
Mister Chair, if I could ask a question, though. Under the library itself, each year they're asking for three hundred thousand in materials and then twenty five or twenty seven five in equipment. Can somebody expand on what that is? Cuz it's consistent over the next four years, same amount every year. What does that cover?
I think that's that's books and can't remember if it's subscriptions or physical computers. That's that's my recollection off the top of my head.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I think you're correct on ours. Computers, the materials are the books. And then again, that was what was requested at the beginning of the one cent seventeen cycle and it's a four-year allocation.
Yeah, the narrative, um, the library's narrative has that blocked out in their their narrative report. While we're talking about the library, I know we didn't get last I heard, we we hadn't gotten any information on the additional.
She thought she gave it to us and I think Jim found that somewhere where she listed all those items. Yeah, you we had it. You or at least if we're not, maybe we're not talking about the same thing, but I called her and she was on vacation. I guess Jim has called her and she's
Greta was on vacation. She was at a conference, library conference somewhere. So I haven't been able to get the information that we discussed or talked about trying to get from her. That's that was
Tracy, do you have that? When she came over and made her amendment, she had about a two-page list of items. And I didn't get one either, but I saw one here. Saw one. Pretty sure Jim Mill it. Jim Mill had it.
It should have been on your desk.
I I didn't see see it. Nobody else has either except Jim. I saw Jim's.
I'd like to come to some closure on on this so we can get a final number. Whether we make an adjustment to it after we hear from Lisa.
No, it was a little little different format. I don't know, though.
This one?
Now, see what he's got over there. I saw it, I thought, but but I don't know what he's seen that one either.
He he has it.
Oh, he has that one?
Yeah, he had some other page.
I just can't.
This is what you had.
Well, this is what he had.
Well, here are this. Are you talking about this?
Well, that looks more like it.
That's just
That's it. Same thing.
Yeah. It was something that I know I that I didn't see in mind.
Yeah, this is all good. Yeah. Okay. That's all part of the
Did you notice where I put your keys? On the top of your licorice?
This one? Looked on the back.
She had another list. I thought I saw that it's numbered.
Look that back.
I'll get it back.
So got this right in the book. Can you get that? I'm wondering if part of that isn't our confusion. It was a was part of my confusion. I don't know where this came from.
This is the new stuff that they sent.
Okay, I didn't.
So anything that is not in your book is the extra stuff that they have sent.
And that would be this? So?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yeah, so anything that's not that is in your book is the additional stuff that she sent later.
Okay.
Which is kind of a duplicate, but it's double page.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know I was confused too when I was trying to put it.
There's two of two. There we go. These two, yeah, these two go together right here. These two go there. No, right there.
You guys, are you two ready?
I am.
Yep.
Much as I can be. See, that's the problem is they when we track it, it's just the whole thing, right? So you're not seeing this. We're just seeing what they want. We're not seeing what they did in the past. That's my where they're, you know, where the increases are and stuff like that.
I'm sorry. I have a hard stop at one o'clock. Drive like two minutes. Uh huh. Yeah, so I am gonna be late for my next meeting. My my feeling is that this is still based on speculation of what may or may not happen, including funding from the Library Foundation and other sources. My feeling is that this is still these numbers are increased based upon a perceived need of now or maybe in the future. My feeling is that we keep the status quo budget. Lisa specifically told us when she was here that the Library Foundation was gonna wait to make a decision until they saw what we were gonna do. Which to me very clearly implies that they can continue this for the coming fiscal year. They can continue their past practice. And my feeling is that we can come back and have lots of discussions with the library on any number of issues, including making needed repairs to that old building. Right now, we have a budget request in front of us that is significantly higher than it was last year and we have taken a hard look at every department and tried to keep not only a status quo budget, but try to find reductions where we can. So that's that's my personal feeling on on this additional amount.
May I make a comment, Mister Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I suggested that they put in their budget things that they had not put in their budget previously. That were items of expenditure that they had that they felt were legitimate county requests, but for some reason historically it had never been put in. So that's why you seen see this extra six hundred thousand. Now, what was my motive for that? Was their idea to ask for the two million? And I said, well, you know, we put it in there. The commissioners are gonna have very clear-cut feelings about all this. But what I was hoping to accomplish and I'm not sure that I did with their help, of course. And that is to put a complete picture in front of the commissioners about the cost of doing business at the Natrona County Library. Now, two million has something to do with building a new building. They know we're not gonna give them fifty million dollars for a new building. So there's been in a double bind here and in Wyoming language, that's called between being between a rock and a hard place. Which is that you don't fix something up cuz you want a new one. And so you keep wanting a new one and you keep not fixing things up. So I mentioned this at the last meeting. I wanted you to have a full picture of what the costs of doing business was for them, what the costs then of fixing things were that probably should have been fixed long before any of us were ever on this commission. So you could get this picture in front of you. And then my own personal, as a commissioner, my own personal thought was at some point we make a statement about here's what we want done with the library. Here's what we're gonna do and then nobody, everybody knows. Instead of a lot of this swirling around in a, you know, in a toilet that's been flushed. And I would just like to get that firmly in our minds and then we firmly have a meeting and we firmly decide what we wanna do and they'll do it because that was our decision. But you had to have all the information.
Mister Freel.
Mister Chairman, the only thing that I wanna say about this is, again, I'm not gonna rehash everything I said. I think the two million telling us to put that in account, that should be off the table. Second thing is if this six forty two zero sixty eight has anything to do with taking care of things that we've been told for the last decade that need to be done and they're their life's health and safety issues, then I think we should put some money off to the side to take care of those issues because we're pretty much being told right now that there are issues within that building that we're not compliant with. So we need to bring that building up to compliance. I would say put that amount in there, but then other than that, leave it status quo.
Well, Commissioner Freel, that amount is would exceed many millions of dollars. I think what what we have and what we need to work on, we have Garrett's plan to address some of these items are on that MOA two thousand thirteen study. So we are gonna take, you know, kind of bite-sized nibbles at some of those items. And then for the other items, that's part of this conversation. We don't really have in the six hundred thousand dollars, as I see it, an inclusion of any significant items on that MOA list.
And I guess what I'm saying is I'm not saying take the whole thing and clean it all up overnight. Those those are life, health and safety like today, like gonna be a an issue, fires, fire suppression or whatever it might be. Those type of things that need to be addressed immediately and should have been addressed. I think we do that. I'm not saying put in millions of dollars to renovate the building over there. I'm just saying let's take care of what we know could create an issue for the building itself or people going into the building.
And and we don't have that list or we don't have it prioritized. And that's a that's this conversation that we need to have with library folks.
Yeah.
We don't and we can't out of the six hundred forty two thousand dollars pick some amount cuz it's not broken down like that. There there's, as I understand it, none of that would go to the MOA list of items. Now Garrett's list over on the maintenance side of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so does address I believe, two or three of those items.
Well, the amount that that address did address those things that you guys were talking about, they did address it by by putting in information from past bids of things being fixed ten years ago. But they add, they do add up, Steve, to about ten to fourteen million to fit to fix everything that they say is should be fixed in the building. And that's why I wanted the information to be given to you guys so you could start absorbing that, so we could make some decision about what we're gonna do. Because we're not, it's like, it's like the past deal I asked where we put a certain number of make few million dollars into a fund that's gonna be used to repair our buildings. Because we have to face that cuz they've they've been band-aided out. Things gotta be replaced. Things gotta be major league fixed. And we're the old boys.